Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, March 18th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." The audio that you heard was our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir and the video that you would see online or on television is courtesy of the National Film Board and thank you to them for that. I would look for a motion for the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes, councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the minutes of the city council meeting held March 4th, 2013 to be adopted.
Thanks very much councillor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes before we approve them? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And a motion for the minutes of the special council meeting held March 6th. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the minutes of the special council meeting held March 6th, 2013 to be adopted.
Thanks very much councillor Gustafson. Again, did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Rice.
I move adoption of the agenda with the addition of 10.1 internet voting.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the adoption of the agenda with that addition of correspondence? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That gets all those items out of the way and gets us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for any member of the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We did have notice of one delegation that's here today from the Shores neighborhood and Mr. Raspberry, I believe you said that you would like to come forward. Please come on up to the front, introduce yourself and please be welcome. Welcome. Please, please have a seat. Make yourself comfortable. Welcome. Please have a seat. Make yourself comfortable. Welcome.
Mayor, fellow councillors. Gerald Raspberry, I'm president of the Shores condo board over in the northeast part of the city here. And we have a bit of a presentation, a bit of a brief. I think you have copies there. And I'll just read the brief part. And if you have any questions at that time, feel free to ask them. The 52 residents located within complex have the following concerns as a result of recent thefts and break-in of one residence. The adjoining property to the south of her complex has a vacant home that has been verbally vandalized and destroyed inside since it was vacated approximately 70 years ago. The house and attached garage has been used by persons unknown for unknown purposes and left in a mess. With this unauthorized use, there is a strong possibility the house could be set on fire and pose a severe threat to nearby condo units. We request the city's help in having the present owners take action to eliminate this potential hazard from fire. In addition to fire hazard, should the house catch on fire, the surrounding acreage has not been maintained year-round. This, plus the locked gate, presents two problems. One is restricted access by police and fire staff and second is another fire hazard from all the dead grass and leaves, weeds. The other main issue is the security of the people in the surrounding community, including the residents in the Shores condominiums. As this abandoned house is an attraction to undesirable people and use, crimes such as the theft recently of property and the break-in on February 23rd will probably continue. The above problems present a challenge, especially for the policing of the area. In recent break-in, the police were called the residents three times in one and a half hours before the culprit was found sleeping in an empty home that he broke into in the condo community. If a neighbor had not checked the empty unit as he was leaving his unit, the person would not have been found and would have probably caused considerable damage or theft when he woke, not to mention the safety of the residents, had they been home. Prior to breaking into this unit at approximately 6:30 a.m. in the morning, he had hammered on doors of at least three other units, all with the owner's home. Two of these owners called police, but he could not be found, yet it appeared that he never left fenced condo units, as there were cracks in the snow around and between a number of units. It would be appreciated if council would look into and take action on this about abandoned property. Sir Gerald Raspberry. Incidentally, we have two ladies that are residents there, June Wonnig and Shirley Gorman. And the little fellow back there is Jerry Tratter and I myself.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for making council aware of this. I don't know if we have any questions for the delegation. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just, I've seen the area and the grass overgrown there and everything. Who owns this area now?
I don't know who the owner is. I know that last year, the grass wasn't cut until, I think it was about the 1st of August. Somewhere in that vicinity. And it wasn't very good. And before that, it seemed like it hadn't been much maintenance on it. So I don't know who owns it.
Nice to know.
Maybe you could...
Home? Homes? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions for the delegation? So I don't see any. We typically deal with delegation business towards the end of our agenda, so we'll deal with your presentation then. You're welcome to stay through the meeting and watch and listen, or we can certainly make sure that we're in contact with you to let you know what action council took. So by all means, stay and enjoy the meeting. Or feel free to leave us and we can get back to you with the action that council took.
Well, this would be fine. I did leave a phone number in the bottom and on the attachment there, there's my email address there. And I thank you, I thank you, Mr. Mayor and your councillors for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you for coming. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter? Each regular city council meeting, we have this open opportunity for delegations to come forward and address council on any matters you just heard. And we call a couple of times to make sure that if there's anybody in the crowd that would like to come forward, they have that opportunity. And it doesn't look like we're going to have anybody else coming forward. So we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda. Next up, we would have public hearings, which we have none tonight. We have no unfinished business. And that takes us right into reports on item 8.1, some bylaw amendments. And Mr. Wright, are you going to introduce those? Stuart?
Certainly. Thank you and good evening, Mayor Given, members of city council. My name's Stuart Wright, planner with the city of Grand Prairie. The first bylaw is C-1237C, which is a proposed amendment to the city's municipal development plan. This is an amendment proposed by city administration and the intent is to incorporate city-wide policy direction to address future requests for entrance feature signs on public and private lands. Administration recommends that city council give bylaw C-1237C first reading, established Monday, April 15th, 2013 at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time and location for a public hearing.
Thanks very much. Stuart, look for a motion for first reading. Councillor Rice.
I move first reading of bylaw C-1237C.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. A motion for first reading. I'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Rice.
I move that council establish Monday, April 15th, 2013 at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time and location for a public hearing of bylaw C-1237C.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. Any discussion as to date, time and location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Next is item 8.2, land use bylaw amendment having to do with radio communication antenna systems. Mr. Wright.
And sorry, Mayor Given, I believe C-1100-186, which is associated to the municipal development plan amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Stuart. So we're looking for, that isn't in our council agenda package, but councillor Rice, if we can get a, we'll have a motion for first reading of that land use bylaw amendment and then also same date, time and location.
Okay. I move first reading of bylaw C-1100-186, which is a land use bylaw amendment reflecting the changes to the land use bylaw to deal with a policy change as it relates to the above bylaw.
Neighborhood entrance.
Neighborhood entrance features.
Okay. Thanks. So we have sort of two levels of planning documents and we are proposing a change to one, which will necessitate a change to the one that falls underneath it as well. Thanks very much councillor Rice. So a motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Rice.
I move that council establish Monday, April 15th, 2013 at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time and location for a public hearing.
Thanks very much. Stuart, look for a motion for first reading. Councillor Rice.
I move first reading of bylaw C-1237C.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. A motion for first reading. I'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Rice.
I move that council establish Monday, April 15th, 2013 at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time and location for a public hearing of bylaw C-1237C.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. Any discussion as to date, time and location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Next is item 8.2, land use bylaw amendment having to do with radio communication antenna systems. Mr. Wright.
And sorry, Mayor Given, I believe C-1100-186, which is associated to the municipal development plan amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Stuart. So we're looking for, that isn't in our council agenda package, but councillor Rice, if we can get a, we'll have a motion for first reading of that land use bylaw amendment and then also same date, time and location.
Okay. I move first reading of bylaw C-1100-186, which is a land use bylaw amendment reflecting the changes to the land use bylaw to deal with a policy change as it relates to the above bylaw.
Neighborhood entrance.
Neighborhood entrance features.
Okay. Thanks. So we have sort of two levels of planning documents and we are proposing a change to one, which will necessitate a change to the one that falls underneath it as well. Thanks very much councillor Rice. So a motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you.
You want the same?
And that motion carries. Yeah, same date, time.
I would move that council establish Monday, April 15th, 2013 at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time and location for a public hearing of bylaw C-1100-186, a land use bylaw amendment.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. Any discussion as to date, time and location? Again, these two go together essentially to make this one change, you have to change these two bylaws. That's why they go together at same date, time and location. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Okay, Stuart. Now I guess we can go to 8.2.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Given. And the third bylaw amendment request is C-1100-194, again, a proposed amendment to the city's land use bylaw. This is in respect to radio communication and broadcasting antenna systems, particularly with regard to cell towers and masks. Administration had reviewed the current land use bylaw provisions and also Industry Canada regulations that basically direct that Industry Canada is the governing authority in respect of such decisions of this nature. Administration has proposed amendments to land use bylaw to basically reflect the role that the city would play in considering any future requests of this nature and also to give development and design suggestions, recommendations for any applicants coming forward requesting a facility. This item was presented and discussed through the Public Works Committee, now Community Growth Committee, with sort of a direction basically to incorporate amendments in the new land use bylaw draft. Administration is proposing to bring this forward just to have this sort of regularized in the existing bylaw and would ensure that if the proposals are adopted by city council that the revisions would be incorporated in the new draft, which may not be forthcoming for a few months yet for the full draft land use bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Stuart. So can we have a motion for first reading? Councillor Redburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give bylaw C-1100-194 first reading.
Thanks very much councillor Redburn. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Redburn.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council establish Monday, April 15th, 2013 at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time and location for a public hearing of bylaw C-1100-194.
Thanks very much councillor Redburn. Any discussion as to date, time and location about public hearing? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that finishes all of our reports and takes us into community business. And we start with the Community Growth Committee from March 5th. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council, council receive the minutes of the community living committee meeting held March 5th, 2013.
Community growth, I believe.
Sorry, yes, community growth.
Thanks very much councillor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions that we had to correct in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve the Take Part, Take Pride Committee terms of reference.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson, anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Just briefly, Mayor Given, we had two development permit applications, one for an addition on to the entertainment space at the Great Northern Casino here in Grand Prairie and then the other one was a simple change of use from household major, or household, from a house to an office. And the last one was some quick housekeeping amendments to the Take Part, Take Pride Committee, but other than that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for councillor Gustafson on that Community Growth Committee meeting? Seeing nothing, then we'll move on to our Community Living Committee from March 5th. And councillor McLean, I think you're going to step in for councillor Crokin on that one. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held March 5th, 2013.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did we notice anything out of order that needs to be corrected? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council provide a letter of support for the 2014 Frankophone Games bid.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor McLean. Discussion and debate, councillor Rice.
I noticed in their appearance at the committee, they were asking for a letter of support, but also that the city be a corporate sponsor as well. The city send representatives to the opening and closing ceremonies. This does not appear to address those other two items, this motion.
Councillor McLean, do you want to speak to what happened at the committee?
Thank you councillor Rice. They did, some of them is for fields, for the athletes, which fields would be, and administration is looking at that. I could extend it to you, Gary Roth, to have a say on this.
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, certainly administration is meeting with the Frankophone Games Committee to look at what school facilities through the scores agreement and field usage potentially. Some of that would be gift and kind back to the group. Certainly, we would be bringing back any further outcomes that need to come back to committee at a later date if they're still looking for other corporate sponsorship.
Okay, so this is dealing just one-third of it and the other two-thirds will come back. Thank you.
Councillor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just wondering, maybe a little bit more background on this, like is this just local kids or is this kids from everywhere and how many are expected to come?
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. No, it's not just local, it's throughout the whole province of Alberta. It's the 20th anniversary and be part of a 100-year celebration for the city of Grand Prairie. One of the events that we're talking about, 100-day of events, and it would be a big one. And now, I want to say students, I'm thinking 600 or 800, but maybe Gary, can you correct me? Is it more?
Mr. Roth?
In my understanding, that's about the right amount. Of course, there's students from Frankophone schools throughout Alberta that would be coming to Grand Prairie.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? I'm sorry, councillor Rice.
My question is to Mr. Roth. Mr. Roth, have you spoken to David Allinger about this? I mean, the 100th anniversary committee, you know, we can't have a committee dealing with the city's 100th anniversary and people just deciding these are going to be part of the celebration without coordinating with the 100th anniversary committee.
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, certainly we've been approaching this as a recreation, as sport aspect. We will be coordinating with 100th anniversary as we, if this council decides they wish to support this, then certainly we'll coordinate with the 100th anniversary committee.
Is it your intent that you will coordinate before you decide to say, is this going to meet with the criteria set out by the 100th anniversary committee to be an official 100th anniversary event?
So councillor Rice, my understanding was the 100th anniversary committee was looking to try and line up as many events in our 100th anniversary year and that this, and so I guess the potential is that since this happens that year, that it could be one of those events. I'm not sure that anybody's making any indication that it could be anything more than that. Councillor McLean, was there any further discussion?
No, I think it was brought up in the committee that it would be a very positive venture for the city to take in and since it would be within a 100-year anniversary, it'd be maybe possibly one of those events that two or three days will fill out that 100 days event. So it'd be very positive for the city.
So I think there's maybe just a recognition that it would happen during the same year and so, you know, certainly could be included, but I don't think there's any sort of suggestion that it's going to take over.
Win the bid first.
And I guess my concern, and I certainly am supportive of the event, but my concern is this 100th anniversary is scrambling for funding with the cancelling of the cultural capitals grant. The city needs to...
I'd like to respond to that councillor Rice.
Sure. Just a second councillor McLean. Councillor Rice, you finish your question?
So I just, you know, I guess it's very important that the city coordinate with the 100th anniversary committee and what events they're sponsoring particularly.
Okay. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think councillor Rice, you're 100% correct that if we win the bid, to bring it to the 100th anniversary committee to talk about events, most of it's for administration to find out how many fields got to be booked for soccer or Baventon courts and relay it all within the six or eight sporting events they're going to have. And once the bid process done, administration under Gary, Roth and administration will have to look at community living, how they're all going to make this gel together.
Thank you.
Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I asked the question at committee, what it was going to cost the city to operate and they said that it should not cost any money at all or very little because there was grants according with the Frankophone community. So it'd be a very low cost, if any.
Okay. Thanks councillor O'Toole. Okay, so I think that was all discussion and debate on the motion, so we'll call for the vote on the request for a letter of support for the 2014 Frankophone Games bid. Call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council approve South Bear Creek Ball Diamonds improvements, option number two, safety improvements with additional $70,000 for new bleachers on Diamonds 1 and 2, with funding from the Future Expenditure Reserve.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Councillor Rice?
So this one, this question goes for this one in the next agenda item and it's Mary, very, perhaps through your worship to Ms. Williams. The Future Expenditures Reserve, this seems to be a familiar phrase we're tossing around these days. How much money do we have in that Future Expenditure Reserve and why have we all of a sudden started treating it like a windfall?
Is there somebody from administration that would like to speak?
I thought it was Terry. I thought you were, I thought you were Ken. Audrey, are you Ken?
I am.
I'm sorry. Scratch that, Terry.
Okay. I'm hearing from administration they don't have that information at hand, maybe our director of community living, Mr. Roth?
Miss, your worship, certainly from what I know is that before each of these requests were brought forward to committee, staff did speak with our financial services folks who administer that reserve and they had reassured us that there was adequate funding to cover these projects. I can't tell you the balance of that reserve though.
Well, I don't doubt there's money to cover it or we wouldn't have a motion. I'm just, you know, when you pillage the fund, how much is left concerns me, but okay.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. To councillor Rice, and I don't know the exact amount in this reserve and I did, but it's probably been added a little bit down the road. There was a few reserves. But the question on this was, we did in our budget was just around $500,000 for self-bear renovations, renewal. It's been almost 25 years for the Ball Diamonds had any input in them. And when they came through with three different options, this was the best option that was brought forward to committee and forsake your concerns of fields. And in the end, for these stands was about a $70,000 added addition. So that's why they're going through the reserve.
Oh, I'm very, very supportive of the motion. It's just the money that, so...
Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to also speak in favor of the motion. I believe that the safety concerns at the Ball Diamonds needed to be addressed. I was under the understanding that the bleachers were practically condemned, so it's nice to have them rebuilt and then to have the three Ball Diamonds redone so that they're safe and operational in a good condition. I think that's great.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor Wong. And I'm going to go, councillor Rice, to speak to your concern or your question. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that when council collapsed a number of our reserve funds, at least a portion of that of what used to be called the Facility Depreciation Reserve is now the Future Expenditures Reserve. And so, and it's also the area where we put any surpluses at the end of the year, put it into the Future Expenditures Reserve. So that's, it's a relatively flexible funding source that is intended for things that come up mid-cycle and specifically as related to...
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Turner, do you have additional information?
Thank you, Mayor Given. In looking at the September 30th, 2012 unaudited financial statements, the operating, list of operating reserves identifies the future capital expenditure at 4.3 million.
So as of September, 4.3 million. Okay. Thanks very much for that, Audrey. Any further discussion or debate on the South Bear Creek improvements? Councillor Redburn?
Mayor Given, just a quick note, the other part of this, I guess the background to this recommendation is that we are hosting the Canadian National Native Fastball Championships, which will be, have a huge economic impact to our community. And so I think this recommendation certainly allows for the safety, but also allows us to present Grand Prairie with the proper facilities to host such a prestigious event. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Redburn. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve a 20,000 grant to the Grand Prairie Tennis Club from the Future Expenditures Reserve and further request that the mayor write a letter of municipal support for the Grand Prairie Tennis Club's application to the Alberta Cultural and Community Initiatives Program.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, except for councillor Monroe. Councillor Monroe?
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor Given. So this, this $20,000 to the tennis club, what is its, what does it, what's it allowing them to do? what's it allowing them to do?
Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. To Counsel Monroe, it's about reef, reef membrane in the front and possibly some concrete work. I'd like Gary Roth to speak to this. This is a small percentage of the total bill, but Gary would probably know the whole details.
Mr. Roth?
This is for a project that would be at the decoy armory site, the tennis club uses, where they would totally demolish their existing tennis courts and completely rebuild the, the tennis courts from, from ground up, including new base and new asphalt and new surface. The tennis club has a significant amount of their own fundraising they have accomplished, plus they also would be hoping to leverage a, a Community Initiatives Program grant, and the twenty thousand dollars would be needed to meet their matching share of the, the SIP grant. So the total project value is two hundred and, say roughly, two hundred and four, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. The tennis club only needs approximately twenty thousand dollars to be able to meet their fifty percent share of the, of the grant.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much, Gary. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move counsel direct, Mayor Given, to provide a letter from the City of Grand Prairie to the Minister of Human Services in support of wage enhancements or funding increases to the community nonprofit agency for employee salaries.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Counsel Rice?
Well, I agree that not-for-profit salaries are usually quite deplorable. I'm not quite sure why we're getting involved in this. We, we seem to spend half of our life telling the provincial government to stay out of our business and mind their own business and the other half minding theirs. I'm just not sure why, why, can somebody explain to me why we would get involved in this, worthy though the cause may be?
Sure. Counsel McLean, you want to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I will pass this off to Gary Roth, but as well, I look forward to hopefully the province would a little bit get involved in this with the Kool-Aid Society. Gary?
Your worship, Community Living Committee had directed administration to bring some information back with regards to staff wages at the Kool-Aid Society. This was specific to, due to licensing changes in their childcare area, which caused the Kool-Aids Society to receive less funding from the province in terms of wage enhancements. And the recommendation was that we contact the minister's office to, to request an alternative to that for, for them.
And just, just to speak to this, Counsel Rice, this is the result of an outstanding item on the committee's list of to-dos, and it came from, actually from me at a committee meeting. We had a presentation from the Kool-Aid Society highlighting their ongoing operations. Obviously, they're funded in part by the City of Grand Prairie.
Through FCSS funding.
Through FCSS funding, yes. And one of the things that they identified is that they're having some significant challenges getting and retaining staff, and was impacting their ability to meet the level of service they needed for the community. And so this, I think, is really an opportunity for the council with a letter to act as an advocate for that community agency with one of their other funders to say, you know, you need to, you need to step this up because they can't actually provide the service and they can't hire the people to provide the service that our community needs.
But we asked for an increase in FCSS funding, and that was denied by the province, so...
This is, this is different than FCSS funding. It's, it's a different funding source than FCSS. So it's not asking the province for more money for the City of Grand Prairie, it's acting as an advocate on behalf of one of our community agencies, actually, on a number of our community agencies. Counsel McLean, if you'd like, you can ring in?
Just one, yeah, I'm just going to go off of it, and when they did come to the committee, there was, there was some expansion to bringing children to the new East Link Center for swimming and helping the youth out. And we brought out on the committee that, do you know about, you know, get some books in the library and reading and getting passes to East Link? So there was a lot of information, not just on wages, that were brought to us from the Kool-Aid Center, which is very positive what, how it's happening now. So I really like the approach.
Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Counselor McLean, one more motion out of that committee.
Thank you, Mayor Given. One last one. I move counsel direct, Mayor Given, to provide a letter of support for the Dutch Elm Disease DD Prevention Control Regulation and inclusion of the banded elm bark beetle as a declared pest under the Alberta Agricultural Pest Act.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Any discussion or debate on the Dutch Elm disease? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Counsel McLean, was there anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I do, there's a couple I thought were really good here. South Bear Creek Ball Diamonds getting this, I believe, the over five hundred thousand dollar retrofit fixing three main fields, two or three infield, some fence and new bleachers, a very positive step in the right direction. Possibly Gary Roth can speak to on Monticipi Park Plan. There is a plan in place for South Bear, and I think we're just in the beginning stages of it, so very positive. As well, the Francophone bid for their twentieth anniversary, I'm really hoping we win that bid, and very excited about that. And for GP Tennis Club to actually get a re, new surface to play on, I think to be pretty excited. And actually where it is, it's nestled right by Swan Haven School, you wouldn't even notice, and it's fenced in and it's a beautiful site, so I wish them a complete new area there.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel McLean. That'll take us to nine point three in the council committee, the whole from March eleventh, 2013. Do you have a motion to adopt that set of minutes? Counsel Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting for March eleventh, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or corrections that need to be made before we adopt them? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Wong, do you want to carry on?
Sure, I'll move that council approve the reallocation of the sixty-five thousand dollars budgeted for the Leisure Center Tennis Court restoration to the construction of a multi-sport area and approve two hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars excluding GST from the future expenditure reserves for completion of a multi-sport area at the Leisure Center. And to speak briefly to this, there was some money in last year's budget for construction, reconstruction of the tennis court area that was, that used to be there. They did an evaluation on the area and it was beyond repair, so that budget item is still available. And admin basically went out to the public and asked them, consulted them on what, what kind of multi-sport area could be designed there that would be beneficial to the, to the community. And what they come back with is tennis court area, which could be converted into basketball or any configuration of, or other court, really, outdoor court-related sports, as well as an outdoor long jump pit, which was removed due to some damage that was done to Legion Field. The, the restoration of a long jump pit would allow, would allow the community to host provincial and zone track and field events, which is something that they can't do now without it. And I guess the other item that is important is that this is coming from the future expenditure reserve, so it isn't going to impact the city tax rate, which has already been set by council.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Wong?
Yes, I'll move that council enter into an energy aggregation program with the Alberta Municipal Services Corporation in 2014. To speak briefly to that, our contract with AMSC is expiring at the end of this year, and we have to either look, look to them for a new contract to basically act as an agent on behalf of us for electricity aggregation. So they, they basically go and bid on and buy electricity for us to use. It, it typically would save us, save us a lot of work as opposed to going out and doing our own, our own bidding. It is quite an arduous process. We don't have expertise within the city to do that. So that, that was the other option within the report, and council felt that it was best to, to continue dealing with AMSC, who is an agent for many other municipalities across Alberta.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Wong, was there anything else from that set of, that meeting?
I believe that was all three items.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Wong. That takes us to the Community Safety Committee, which I believe is also a committee that you're going to handle for us.
Yes, sorry, Mayor Given, I did say there was three items, and I only mentioned the two, the third one was the transit terminal. And council directed administration to, to go out and get a detailed design of the Montrose, South Montrose area without, with the exclusion of the transit terminal on that site, and also to look for an alternative location for the transit terminal.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Nine point four, Community Safety Committee.
Yes, I move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held March twelfth, 2013.
Thanks, Counsel Wong. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Counsel Wong?
Okay, I have a motion here to upgrade our design and construction standards. I move that council approve the medians as standard practice, be constructed as follows: stamped colored concrete when on dangerous good routes or high-traffic six-lane arterial roads; grass with one meter stamped colored concrete strips on all other arterial roads; asphalt when the median is temporary or on dangerous road, dangerous goods routes and high-traffic arterial roads; grass when the median is temporary and on all other arterial roads, or otherwise as directed by council. To speak to this, Mayor Given, staff offered a council, or offered the committee several options in terms of how, how medians could be designed and constructed. Everything from grass to asphalt to standard gray concrete to the stamped colored concrete. The stamped colored concrete has been used in the last few years, and we're starting to see that now, it's the, the pink concrete that looks like the zebra, but it's actually not the, not the brick, it's just concrete that's colored pink, and then they stamp an imprint on there to make it look that way. It, it tends to last a lot longer than the other brick does, because the brick heaves and, and shifts around. Committee felt that it added quite a bit of value to the character of our city aesthetically as well as it offered a little bit of color contrast to, which, which could have some safety benefits. The most interesting thing was over the lifespan of the, of the median, it was really just a marginal increase in costs, so we felt that this was the way that we wanted to go from this point forward, and we had to bring it to council for approval.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. To Counsel Wong, just a couple of questions. I think it's very positive having mostly concrete where it's extreme traffic volumes, but in some of the areas, I believe it's a good step with the stamped concrete coming a meter in, because of salt in the winter from the snow, and then grass in the middle, but is, was there anything brought up about, in some areas, I can say eighty-fourth is one of the main av, where some trees might be planted and periodically, so we have a few more trees and more coverage and in the middle where there's grass? Was there any talk of that at all?
Counsel Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I don't think that there were, there was any discussion around trees. I can look to...
There was some discussion around landscaping options and the challenges around maintaining those on a regular basis with staff having to be on the median more often and the challenge of watering and, and interrupting traffic. I don't know if, so that was discussed in brief. I think the committee chose not to look at that, explore that in further detail because of the additional cost and the additional cost and challenges around maintenance.
I'm just throwing it out there, wasn't at this committee meeting, and because I think there are some areas where medians are, where you can really help the cities look if there is some trees in some of them, and so anyways, I'm just throwing it out.
Thanks, Counsel McLean. Counsel Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I was just going to note that point five as directed by council, I mean, certainly if we wanted to put trees out there, that's to council's discretion.
On a project per project basis, yeah, I think, and that's a good catch, actually, because administration did identify that with this policy, council still maintains that flexibility. Okay, any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Counsel Wong, anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yeah, there were three other issues that were raised and, and had some, some resolution. We talked about the incomplete traffic projects from last year, and they will be completed this year. We had correspondence from the Minister of Health and Municipal, Minister of Municipal Affairs on the issue of medevac services affected due to the closure of the Edmonton Municipal Airport. And finally, we directed administration to contact Aqua Terra to discuss ways and means to ensure that residential solid waste collection in neighborhoods without front sidewalks or front driveways to help deal with that issue where collection accessibility is a concern.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Wong. I believe that handles all of our committee business. That takes us to number ten, our additional item of correspondence. Council has received a letter from the Minister of Municipal Affairs with regards to internet voting. This is a letter that went to all the municipalities that were involved in pursuing internet voting for the 2013 municipal election. In essence, it says on the second page, the minister clarifies that at this time, he's not prepared to support the use of internet voting in the October 2013 general election. And so the, if the minister, ministerial support would have been required, they would have had to essentially change the laws to allow a community like Grand Prairie to use internet voting in the upcoming municipal election. The minister has stated that they're not interested in doing that, and obviously, this has an impact on our ability to fulfill the intent of the regional partnership proposal that we'd entered into with Wood Buffalo or Fort McMurray. And so this is here for discussion or debate. My recommendation to council would be that we inform Wood Buffalo and the department that the City of Grand Prairie is no longer interested in pursuing that. Having spoken directly with the minister, he said, he was under the, he was, he related that he was under the impression that we weren't interested in actually conducting these as live votes, that it was just a pilot or a test project, which was, comes as a surprise to me, and I'm sure it comes as a surprise to all of council, that that's, that's what he believed we applied for. I had an opportunity to speak with Mayor Melissa Blake from Wood Buffalo and let her know about her disappointment. She was similarly disappointed, and she understands any direction that our council may take, which would include, if that includes withdrawing from the regional partnership grant. Keeping in mind, the City of Grand Prairie was committed to putting in about three hundred thousand dollars to support that in order to get the two hundred and fifty thousand from the province, so... Counsel Rice?
I would move we not proceed to implement internet voting in the 2013 election.
Sure. So Counsel Rice, I wonder if you, maybe with your motion, could you make a motion to inform the Department of Municipal Affairs and the municipality of, regional municipality of Wood Buffalo that will be withdrawing from the regional partnership?
I would, I would add that in that further that we advise the municipality of Wood Buffalo and the Department of Municipal Affairs that we will be withdrawing from the regional partnership.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Counsel, so discussion or debate? Counsel Wong?
Why in the world would anyone spend three hundred thousand dollars just to pretend to vote? That doesn't make any sense. What, you would assume that they would have, they would have assumed that it was a live vote?
I think Counselor, in my opinion, Counsel Wong, this is a reaction to the fact that Edmonton City Council chose not to go forward with applying to do internet voting in their community, and in my opinion, the government has said, if Edmonton's not going to do it, then we're not comfortable letting anybody do it, which I think is, is somewhat sad, and I think is sort of not the intent of running a pilot project. I think the intent should have been to test this type of technology in a smaller community like Grand Prairie and Wood Buffalo, but basically what happened, I think the province got cold feet, and now they're saying, oh, no, no, we didn't think that you guys actually wanted to use it in a real election, when I think our actual application was pretty clear. So it's, it's very, very disappointing, yeah. Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have to commend council on this. I wasn't all for it because I thought it... I thought of a lot of Councilors in the city I'm concerned about security risks and I think your vote's number one in this country, a major, major. But the goal of this county was get percentage of voter turnout, to increase it, which was a very positive step forward. And so that was very good on this Council to try to do that, I didn't believe in the number money value for it, as Counselor Wong said, you wouldn't just have a trial for $300,000. But there's other issues, ways I believe Council could look at, could be a major issue of spending, adding to the debt could be a plebiscite on, on issue of voting day, we'll give higher voter turnout most likely. There's one in Australia does for, they have eighty-five to ninety percent voter turnout and if you don't show up to vote, you pay a little bit more taxes. So you know what, I don't know if we'll go that way, that's provincial and all that, I know that, but the plebiscite probably be our area, but I, I think it was generally right direction, Mayor Given, for even though I didn't support all of it for different issues, it was a good try.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That takes us to delegation business. We had one delegation, the residents of the Shores condominium units. Council, we need a minimum of motion to receive that information and maybe something further, Counselor Rice?
Do we know, they referenced to the fact that they had thought, they had heard that that property was condemned. Is that rumor, is that fact? And if it is fact, does that, I, I know we have been for quite a long while waiting for a report to be prepared on derelict properties, I'm not quite sure when that's coming forward. But under the existing legislation, once a property is condemned, do we have more powers?
So I'm not sure if we have that information at hand, probably the appropriate action would be send this to a committee where we can get all that information on this specific property. I would say that over the last while administration's done a pretty reasonable job of sort of cross-functional team, bringing together team from enforcement services, development services and others to address some other derelict properties, which we've actually been successful in getting knocked down. So hopefully there's a way forward on this one as well.
Then I would move that we refer this to the appropriate committee for follow-up.
Sure, and I think that'd probably be the Community Safety Committee.
Yeah.
Okay, so to Community Safety, discussion and debate on the motion of referral? So this is essentially the first step in taking some action on the concern that was raised by the residents today. Council will send this issue down to the committee that deals with things in this area and that way administration will have an opportunity to bring back all the relevant information for us so we can make a decision about how to proceed. Discussion and debate, Counselor Wong.
Thanks, Mayor Given, is there a possibility to refer any immediate action to administration right now and then they could still report back to committee? I believe that we do have some tools at our disposal administratively to deal with this. And that way that these residents get faster action.
Do you have a suggestion, Counselor Wong, of what action you'd like to see?
I'm, I'm, I assume that our, our enforcement services has at their disposal the ability to, to examine these properties. I don't know if I could look to anyone for, for help here from administration, but this isn't the first abandoned property in our city.
Sure, Acting Community Safety Director, Ms. Donnelly?
Thank you.
You just have to get your microphone, Ms. Donnelly.
Sorry about that. My understanding is we do have a group of individuals that can pull on different, different acts and bylaws to check them out for fire or building or different things like that and that group of individuals could investigate this situation and get back and do, take steps.
So, so I wonder maybe that group could bring back information to the next committee meeting, right? So, so refer it, Counsel, Counsel Rice is referring the matter for information to the committee meeting. I suppose the, the intent would be that it would also be referred to administration at the same time where they can collect that information so we, so we're not sort of waiting to collect it. Is that what you're looking for?
That's what I was looking for.
Counselor Rice?
And I wonder if it's part of that report, they could inform us. Certainly, police and fire may have they referred to a locked gate, which makes it difficult for police and fire to access and so I wonder if the report could, could include the information, like do we have the right to force the owner to get rid of the gate for those, those safety reasons?
Sure, okay, thanks, Counselor Rice. Well, I think administration would be provided with a copy of the information that was given to us by the residents and so they'd be able to explore all the concerns there and then be prepared to speak to what concern, what action they have taken or recommendations for actions at the next committee meeting. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, I know safety concerns with the empty house is pretty important there, but the one that struck me was if I didn't mow my lawn until August, I believe somebody from the city possibly in the community would have said, wow, three feet high, what's kind of weed control do we have here? And somebody from the city would come and mow it if I didn't do it after being noticed, notified and I would have a bill. So I don't know why that process hasn't happened here at this area, so hopefully administration will look at that.
Okay, so we have a motion to refer this essentially to committee, but also administration will look at it in the end terms, they come to the committee meeting with some, some information. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Call for the vote. Okay. And that motion carries. There were no further items of delegation business. We had no notices of motion, that takes us to council member reports from external agencies, boards and commissions in which the council members sit. And Counselor O'Toole, I believe you're the only one that had any for us tonight, so you can start with combative sports and then library board and South Peace Regional Archives.
All righty, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just after our last event that we had with a group out of Fort St. John called Five Star, we had a, not, not actually a meeting, but a post-event discussion. And that was to see, because of the fact that this was a new venue that we used, to see where our deficiencies were and where we excelled at. And everything turned out quite well, we had two doctors on site and one paramedic and two EMRs and they didn't really do a lot that day, it was a pretty self-contained event. As for volunteers, we were really good. As for the venue, there was probably about eight hundred people in the jackpot, I'm not sure on that number, so hope the fire marshal's not listening. Also, we have an event happening here on the twenty-ninth. And it's the weigh-in for the excessive forest, the event itself takes place on the thirtieth. And they're a local group from Grand Prairie and there's approximately fifteen events on the, on the fight card. And that would be my report for the combative sports. As for the archive board, South Peace Regional Archives, Irene Nicholson has been the president or chair of this committee for a number of years and she has stepped down this year and I want to congratulate Lain Borsted for stepping up. He's been around for many years in this community and he's an instructor at the GPRC. On the on Saturday, we had our AGM and Darrell White, another instructor from the GPRC, did a, basically a presentation on connections of the War of 1812 to the peace country. And there are a number of people after 1814, 1815 moved out west here to the Grand Prairie and area. And if you get a chance to look in your mailboxes, you'll have one of these little pamphlets from, from the South Peace Regional Archives. It's a, it's a booklet printed four times a year, it's called Telling Our Stories and there's a number of good, incisive information in this. One more big event that took place at the AGM was the awarding of the Beth Sheen Award to Fran Muir and the De Bolton District Pioneer Museum. And that's pretty much the, the highlight of the, the year. These people work very hard to promote archival history and do a lot of research and gathering. And the library board, I am got some, hang on here. We had our meeting just last week, the library board is kind of in a situation where a longtime employee, Pam Chislet, is retiring and it's, she's put a lot of effort into many, many locations in town with the library and she's pretty much the backbone of the Grand Prairie Library. But we do have a replacement and her name is Kelly Dixon and she will be taking over, well, she has taken over as of March 11th. Well, Pam Chislet's last day of employment at the, at the library is March 28th. I'd like to congratulate Maureen Currie for doing a great job on doing a policy review and actually rewriting the, the policies to today's standards and not copying and pasting from other areas or other libraries, these are specific to this community. And she's doing a great job, she's just new to the Grand Prairie as of January 1st and she's getting really involved in the city. And also, we had our meeting at the Peace Library Office and I want to thank Linda Duplessis for, Duplessis? Duplessis? For doing a great job on promoting the Peace Library and giving the tour to our new board members. And that would be my report, sir.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, so I believe that starts all the reports from our external agencies, boards and commissions and we'll start council member roundtable with Counselor Rice, Counselor Rice?
Attended an ARMA meeting, I think some exciting news. The government has improved an expansion of electronics that can now be recycled. Their electronics program will now operate year-round. However, they will have the special roundups once a year, so for the next council meeting, I should be able to bring you some more up-to-date information on that, but I think a rather exciting expansion of electronics recycling. And I want to take this opportunity to congratulate in advance the Daily Herald Tribune, who is having a huge anniversary celebration this weekend and has invited back all of the former people that worked for them, so I think it's a hundred years, which is absolutely amazing, so congratulations in advance to them.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice, Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given, aside from my regular scheduled duties, I attended a homecoming subcommittee meeting and MGA review meeting, I'd like to thank our Terry Williams for all the insight she gave us today on that and aside from that, I was down in Edmonton for, for a couple of days and all I can say is if, if you think we have some bad roads, go to Edmonton, they make us look good. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson, Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given, on March 5th, I attended the presentation at the Grand Prairie Regional College Theater of award-winning Canadian First Nations author Richard Waggamies. For those people who ended up missing that, they really missed a treat of a presentation, he was funny, he was riveting, he told some great stories and dispensed some really awesome advice. So you really did miss out there. On March 7th, I attended the Crystal Center Economic Assessment meeting with Council and the consultants from PricewaterhouseCoopers and Conrad Boychuk from CEI Architects. March 8th, I attended the meeting with the Chamber Commerce Board and City Council. On March 9th, I brought greetings on behalf of the mayor and council to the Aboriginal Youth Role Model Awards at their Spirit Seekers Conference. Let's see here, March 12th, we had an annexation negotiation team meeting. For Wednesday and Thursday, on March 13th and 14th, I was in Fallair for the Smoky River Agricultural Trade Show, representing my position on the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. And let's see, March 15th, we had our annexation mediation meeting between the city and the county.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, March 6th, I had a, was in city chambers for in-camera meeting for contracts, which is out now, QP, and I think they did pretty good compared to what's happening in the province. On March 7th, Canada Games Arena, I was as well there for the CEI Architectural Design Pricewaterhouse. March 8th, I was also at the luncheon at the Centre 2000 Chamber of Commerce, always good to attend them and the chamber's very big in Alberta. And March 11th was also at City Hall for a meeting, council committee meeting. And on March 18th, today, we're also here again for a bit on, on meetings as well, committee.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. March 11th, I attended the mornings, the morning of a day-long session call that takes the community in to end homelessness, a community consultation. I think there were fifty-ish community representatives at that session. We began by interviewing each other to learn about our experiences and how, how we are involved with, with the project or with providing service to the homeless. And then as a group, we looked at making meaning of those interviews and that information that we gleaned. In the afternoon, they looked at image inspires action, so they looked at kind of where we want to be, what's our vision and how we can get there. So congratulations to our staff for hosting the event, city staff for hosting the event. It's going to be coupled with some interviews with homeless persons to validate and gain, glean new information that will inform this, the plan. So a good day. March 12th, Annexation Mediation City Caucus meeting. March 14th, Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Board meeting. We finalized and approved the budget, we now have a budget with four components, one that, one that is visitor information center, one that is GPRTA, another that is travel Alberta projects and the fourth that is a destination marketing fund. And so we now have four components that we look to balance each component of that budget. So I think we've made some great progress in terms of budgeting and the financial sustainability of that organization. Then in the afternoon, I attended the city-sponsored innovation workshop for staff. Our city hosted two sessions, a morning and an afternoon, I believe there were sixty-some in the morning and thirty-ish in the afternoon. Thought they facilitated a good job, I think it provided some food for thought and I found that the staff, I would commend our staff in the city for their engagement in the process. I think they were engaged, they were interested and excited and I'm sure they'll take some good ideas back to the workplace that will, I guess, really impact the culture of our organization further. March 15th, we had the city-county annexation mediation discussions and also had a meeting with Debbie Normington, Grand Spirit Foundation General Manager. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn, Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I wasn't here much the week before, I was down in Las Vegas checking out the weather and it seemed to be pretty good, so I come back. There was people down there with winter coats on, it was seventy-two degrees, I was in a t-shirt and they couldn't believe that they weren't wearing winter coats. I can tell you that on the fourteenth of this month, I was at the innovation session as well and I thought that the presentation and the input from the group of people was very good. On the Friday, the fifteenth, I attended the tender opening and later on that day, I attended the Coca-Cola Center to bring greetings at the Peewee Girls Hockey Provincial Tournament. There was ten teams from all over the province, that adds up to about a hundred and eighty-three girls, plus each team had at least five coaches and parents. uh, each team had at least five coaches and, uh, parents. Uh, it was a pretty exciting girlish event down there, and, uh, lots of excitement and lots of drum rolls and lots of loud music, and it was good. I can tell you, though, that the highlight was, uh, Edward Hussain, a longtime businessman in the community, was awarded, uh, a book regarding hockey, and it was for being eighty-five years old and still playing one or two games a week. And he will be playing in a tournament later on this, in April, and all the competitors are at least eighty-five years of age. And there's a number of people that are playing hockey, so, uh, he's doing good. And I can tell you, man, there's lots of luck for you down the road here.
Alex, keep on playing.
And today, I, I had, uh, a number of meetings to attend, and I apologize for, uh, uh, being late at a couple of them, but, uh, I had a Chair Leaders Meeting, uh, today, and it's, uh, a meeting to organize for the May, what did I write down here? It's here. May thirteenth will be the Chair Leaders Day of, uh, many, many people from the community that are considered leaders in the municipality of Grand Prairie and the city and area will be placed in wheelchairs to experience what it is like to go through a day in a wheelchair. And, uh, it looks like we're going to have an overwhelming number of people stepping up to the plate this year. And I think this is our third year that we've had it. Uh, Mayor Given, you were spent a day in the chair here three years ago. Uh, Counselor Wong and myself, and you did it again last year, and it sounds like we're going to have, uh, a, a great number turning out as well, uh, for this year. So, thank you very much. That's my report.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Monroe?
I have, uh, nothing to report at this time, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Um, I, since I'm the last to finish, I'll try to be relatively brief, considering a number of the events I attended have already been mentioned. Uh, on Tuesday, the fifth, I, uh, attended a city-county annexation meeting. On, um, Wednesday, the sixth, I was here at City Hall to, um, speak with a group of students from the Francophone School, the Cole Nouvelle Frontier, uh, about local government. And, uh, later that day, I attended another city-county annexation meeting. Uh, on Tuesday, the seventh, I had a meeting with a new library director, an opportunity to chat with her and welcome her to Grand Prairie. And, uh, later that day, there was an opportunity, as I was just mentioning, to preview the presentation on the Crystal Centre expansion. Um, on Friday, the eighth, I, uh, listened in on a conference call with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and the Minister of Transportation, uh, in regards to the provincial budget and, uh, some of the details about the programs that did stay and some that disappeared. And later that day, I attended the meeting with the city of, with council and the Chamber of Commerce Executive, uh, a great opportunity to share information with one of our important community partners. Um, on Monday, the eleventh, I also attended the It Takes a Community, uh, event around homelessness, uh, that Counselor Radburn had mentioned. It was great to see, um, such a wide variety of community agencies, partners and service providers, uh, in attendance. Uh, it was disappointing to see, um, and maybe, um, indicative to see that there were only two developers. There were only two private sector people in the room. Uh, and so I think one of the challenges in addressing homelessness is engaging the public sector so that we have appropriate housing options. Um, but there were only, uh, two that were really active in that space in our community, and so I think that that's, uh, uh, obviously a challenge for us to address. Um, on March the twelfth, I attended a reception at the Bi, uh, Business Development Bank of Canada. Uh, they had a reception for clients, just highlighting some of their services that they provide to the region. Um, and on Wednesday, March thirteenth, I went on a tour to Edmonton, uh, provincial-sponsored tour of their new medevac facility at the Edmonton International Airport. Uh, the province, uh, brought in, uh, local politicians and community leaders and, uh, community agencies from across northern Alberta to view the new Edmonton medevac terminal. Um, my overall impression would be, um, uh, that if one accepts the premise that the Edmonton Municipal Airport is going to close, um, then the provincial government is doing an appropriate job of addressing the concerns of northern Alberta residents. Um, I guess it's, uh, in the community, there's still obviously lots of concern, um, as it's, uh, completely understandable that there would be. Um, I think that, um, given the chain situation that the province is, uh, enacting an appropriate response, uh, the terminal building that they have, um, was impressive to say the least. You could probably fit in ten fixed-wing planes and another ten Stars helicopters and another ten ambulances all in the same building. Um, and so that's, uh, a vast improvement over, um, the Edmonton City Centre Airport where they, um, uh, had patient transfers out in the open elements where a plane would land and they would essentially take the critically, uh, the, the patient, no matter what the weather, from, uh, from inside the plane out through the elements and then into the, uh, ambulance. Uh, the province, uh, is providing information on how they're going to respond to all the Health Quality Council, um, recommendations, and I believe that as a community and as northern Albertans, it's important that we stay, uh, engaged in the process to ensure that the province is following up on all those actions that are recommended. Um, I don't believe that all of them will be, I don't believe it's possible to address them all at once, um, but I think as, uh, community leaders, we need to stay engaged to ensure the province does follow up on those recommendations. Um, so it was a worthwhile tour and, um, appreciated seeing, um, MLAs from many different parties there, as well as, uh, folks from our Grand Prairie Chamber of Commerce and other municipalities across the region. On, uh, March fourteenth, I also attended the innovation session that Counselor Radburn and O'Toole mentioned. And then later that evening, I was at the Coca-Cola Center to drop the puck on the, uh, JDA Kings Northwest Junior Hockey League Championship, uh, series against the, um, Peace River Navigators. I would note that the JDA Kings have actually won the first two games in that series. Um, and Deputy Mayor North Darling of Peace River is in some trouble with our little side bet. Um, uh, on the fifteenth, I also attended another city-county annexation meeting. And I believe that's all that I have to report up to today. Uh, I believe there's no further business for our council meeting, so I'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.